Shiva Rama 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 Shada da da diyo 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 Naan neesidra dana yen pulle Shiva Rama 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 Naan sagarathin pudidakara devan Oh Shiva Rama Rama Naan sagarathin pudidakara devanoy Ungal matthi nee kadandu vandirukkare Shiva Rama 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 Yeppulle ye, nee palan erathil Yenakku unmeelamal irundhalu Naan unakkun unmeelila devanoy Shiva Rama 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 Unmeedu manadu urugira devanoy Shiva Rama Rama Oh Rama unpaavangalai manneedurukkare Unudai kandhirai kandeen Un minna pathiguka badiyin kandeen
Hallelujah, amen.
Yeppulle ye, Shiva Rama 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 Yo unudaiya avikuri jeevite Idho naan katthi yedupukkare Shiva Rama Rama Udayindu bohene unparisutham Udayindu bohene ude deva anbe Un jaba jeeviyal naan marbuddi katthugare Shiva unudai avikuriya Wallamai thadiseegare Sanbalathin pallavale naan udayinkare Unudai pudiyai jaba aviyai naan uddugare Shiva Rama
Hallelujah, hallelujah.
Un viswasthey katthi yedupukkare Sagalamu pudidakukkare nande Seenigalinkattasolukkare
Hallelujah, hallelujah. Kathodiyi parisutha namathukka maymundavada.
May the God's holy name be glorified.
This is our convention's last prayer.
And this is the last prayer of our convention.
After this prayer is over, we have to continue our prayer.
It doesn't mean that we are closing this prayer. Till the convention, you have to stand in the gap.
This is our responsibility. In these days, no one will believe.
And those who do not attend this prayer and they are not called as believers.
Even if you believe, you should attend this prayer. This is a battle field. If you come with preparation to this battlefield, we can conquer in this battle. At least if one prayer is impossible to come, you should have attended other prayers. We have to inherit our land. At this time, we have to stay in the presence of God. Perhaps you may stand in the gap for your family matters. This is a good time. We have to do our ministry in a right way. When we look into the book of Joshua, Lord said, "You have to inherit the land." And this is a splendid time to inherit our land. And we have given a little time to inherit our land. And this time, we should not remain silent.
Joshua 18:3 And Joshua said unto the children of Israel, "How long are you slack to go to possess the land which the Lord God of your fathers had given you?" Ahgiyam Yosua Israeel Buttrari noke Ungal pidakalin devanagey kathir Ungalakkuk kodathu desathai sudandarithu kolapoguratharku Ningal endamattum asadya irupirgal.
All believers and all believers, asadya irakkukkada uneram idhu dan.
This is the time where the believers or servants of God should not be slack.
If you need to inherit this velur and if you are slack and it is impossible, if we are like that and we are accused it, and this is the time we have to possess the land. When we go to and fro of this land and the Lord say, "I will give you this land, the promise of God." When we look into the book of Joshua, chapter 1, verse 3.
Jannangali noke
Yosua 1:3
Naan Mosai kesonnabadi Ungal kaaladi medikkam evidatay ungalakkuk kodathen.
Kather namakkun desathai kodukumbriyaga vandirukkare.
The Lord have come in our midst to give the land to us.
Naam inna naakalile sutthirikavo Uliyangilla pankadukavo Kathodiyi karangillacheyavo Naam asadya gundhal naam adeshondrikki ee lath.
But when we are being slack in doing the ministry of God we come into the presence of God and we cannot possess the land.
Pidnalkrillanam poradi purojinam illa.
And in the latter days, if we are striving hard, there is no use of it.
This is a splendid time. Inna varshangal pogapoga Bitya samana soonaligal undakav Appanam unnu panna mudiyad.
When the years have passed and we are in a different situation, and it is impossible.
Nehemia or ariki pola dicheegar.
And Nehemia did like a confession.
1:5
Chapter 3, verse 35.
Sorry, Nehemia 1:5
Book of Nehemiah, chapter 9, verse 35.
Avagall thangal rajaithilum Neer avagalluk koduthu umudiyapiriyadaaya illum Neer avagalluk munbaga thirandu vaittha Visalamum selipumana desathilum Umakkuvoodiyaseyyamalum Thangal durkkarmangali vittuthirumbamalum ponaargal. Idho inrayathina naan gal adimigala irukro.
Here, here is an important thing mentioned. Life and ministry. When they did not do the ministry, so they failed in life. And the word of God say, and they became slaves. Neer avagalluk munbaga thirandu vaittha Visalamum selipumana desathil Avagallu unakkuvoodiyaseyyavellai.
And they did not do the ministry where the Lord have given the large and goodness of field.
Eppo orta uvoodiya olanga seyelyo Avundai jeeviyumu faultadanarko.
When one is not doing the ministry properly and life becomes a fault.
Avagall thangal durkkarmangali vittuthirumbamalum ponaargal.
And they did not turn away from their wicked works.
Adhanal avagall adimigalaga mariinark.
So because of them, they become servants or slaves.
Namakkuk kodukappatta uvoodiyathan namcheyelannan Namadimigala imaruvo Jeeviyum sarialavatalum adimigala imaruvo.
And if we do not do the ministry which is rented in our hands and we become slaves in our lives.
So this is a time for us.
And this is a time we have to make this velur our own.
How we can inherit ourself.
And Moses walked on that thing. So it is not the time we are going to walk. And in the prayer, you have to go around. And you have to strive hard in praying. And this is a time that is open for you. And Joseph asked that you have come, that you have let land was opened unto you. And within few days, this nation and land will be closed. And there will be darkness of thickness will cover this world. And there will be condition which will be pronounced that we have to stay in the home and pray. But the time is now is not like that. Now it is kept open for us. So Joshua asked the people, and how long will you be slack? You came out of Egypt. You came out of the wilderness. You entered into Canaan. But what you are doing, the whole nation is yours, but you will take time to possess the land. You came out of the sin. You have took quarter baptism. You received anointing. And you have come to the church called Canaan. But you are taking time to possess the land. That is wrong. And this is the time we have to inherit the land. It is very needed. This land have to be subjected unto the feet of the Lord. So in this ministry, we have to give up our shoulders. And it is not time to look around. And it is not the time just giving our opinions. In this time, you have to give your shoulders in this ministry. As a stranger, you should not walk around. If a marriage in your home, now you will be. And it is a function in the home. And this is our convention. So this is our center convention. So we have to take long labor and efforts. So there is a matter that we have to prepare ourselves. Joshua when crossed the Jordan, sanctify yourself and the Lord will do the miracle in your next morning. Sanctification and ministry is very important. So we have turned this meeting as a sanctification meeting. A believer when he has changed sanctification. And he can see the marvelous and miraculous thing in the convention. 3:5 of Joshua.
Yosua jannangali noke Ungaliparisutha manikulligal Naalaki kathir ungalnadivile arpudangali seyvar.
Avadi kinnukku munnala yoradan apdirendak pirinju oodn.
And before his eyes, Jordan was divided. Will it happen?
Kariburandu oodukravada yoradan Asariirgal pettiyodu kaal vetcha odane Apdriyairinda klinjiponna maripochi.
When the Jordan, which it was overflowing, when the priests kept their feet on them and it was divided.
The reason is, the people of God, they sanctified themselves.
So we are using this meeting as a sanctification meeting. If we sanctify ourselves, the Lord will descend.
If you prepare a sanctuary for him, surely he will come and dwell here.
Here, if there is a tabernacle, there will be a glory of God. If there is a temple here, surely the Lord will come in our midst. If here is a holy sanctuary, surely the Lord will come in our midst. Your eyes self, when you are sanctifying yourself, Lord must come in our midst. It may be near the Jordan. Janangal parisutha manikundal podum Kather yaringi arpudangalay seyvar. When the people sanctify themselves, the Lord will listen and do wonders among them. And he is a mighty man in the battle. And he is called the Lord of hosts. On one part, this battle belongs to God; on the other part, belongs to us. We stand in the field, but as an invisible God, he come and buy battle for us. And we see, or we look unto the conflicts of men, but the Lord look unto the conflicts of spirit.
We throw stones and do the work and we cook in the kitchen, but the Lord will do the spiritual work, our sanctification, repentance, conviction.
It is our work that we have to prepare ourselves. So I have told, the reason is, those who do not come to the meeting are not called as believers. I need believers, those who give life for this ministry. I need people, those who give life for the truth. I need the people who stand on the gap. I don't want the believers who offer offerings. I need the people who give life for the truth. I need to see those who live in the love of Christ, whatever happens to me. And I need a people, a group of people who can tell that who can separate me from the love of Christ. I need the people who bear the cross. I need the Paul who can bear the cross. I need the people who crucified on the cross. Only with such people, Christ can glorify this church. Thousands of people and thousands of denominations churches may be there. What is mentioned in Song of Salmone. And there is no count for the virgins. There may be thousands of believers. And there may be women for thousands. And there may be concubines for eighteen. And there may be the uncountable virgins. When we look on the Song of Solomon, chapter 6, verse 8 to 9. Yenakkutthavayyo, krishthuvukutthavayyo, sabikutthavayyo, maghumikutthavayyo, yen puravoh, yen utthamiyoh, oruthiyeh. But the church for the Christ, for the Lord of sacred, the mind did mild down and by Antiphil is one. How many sisters may be there? And there may be many believers and servants of God in the church. And there may be anointed and anointed. And then maybe the rich people, those who sustain in the church. And there may be the pillars who are found in the church. And there may be some of the people who give labor. I need a group who say that my down, my Antiphil is but one. Then may be thousands of people, but only one mansion will take up the throne. If it is convention, you have to give up your life. It is mentioned for the good work, they have strength in their hands. And he said so, that Sanballa Tobiyah, unto the people, if you come and give labor for us, and he said, "So this is a great work. If we come there, the work will be corrupted or spoiled." And he said, "So I will not come." And if I come, the Lord's word will be stick. And he told that to call for a while. When we look on the book of Nehemiah, chapter 4, verse 3.
Appanadhan naan avagallidhakka aartkalay adapi Naan periyaveleyeseyigare Naan varakkudadu Naan andhavaleyavittu ungalidhakku varugradhanal Adu minakkettupovanen endusollasol.
I am doing a great work. And there was a fasting prayer. Sanctification meeting. And their work have a lot of lots house. And there is a work in Lord's house. And the work behind convention is going on. And this is a great work of God. And this is the work of the Lord. And if I come for one hour or two hour, the Lord's work will be ceased. And such in Nehemiah as needed in the church. May the God's holy name be glorified. In two places and the communion was over. This is third communion. And two or three minutes, I will talk about this and come to the communion part. When we look into the book of Romans, chapter 1. 14:15
Kreekarukum, macha aniyerukkum, yaaniyukkum, moodeerukkum Naan kadanaaliyai irukkare Ahgiyam Roma puriyilirukkara ungalukum Ennal iyanjamattum suviseshathai pressinkavirupugare.
Or devanudai eplai iyanramattum suviseshathai pressinkavenduma. The people of God have to accord with the efforts, they have to preach the gospel. Bible says, and we are debtors. You jakkafin konfor. And literally, you may walk wise without debtors. And that is a subject, when time comes, I will speak. I believe and hope that you will not receive debts more. If you are a good person, you will never receive. When the spirit of God urge me, I will speak. And by grace, and you can manage your family without receiving or borrowing money. But the Bible say, "You are a debtor." For whom you are a debtor. And he have brought you for a price. And you are brought for a price, a given is blood and life for you. And you are not come without money. And this is the church owned by his own blood. And this is the church, the Lord has shed his blood and have owned this church. If you come to this church, the Lord have given the man, the blood and have got you. And he have given life instead of you. Now who you are? To whom you have to give them? And you have to pay the amount given blood for you. First Corinthians, chapter 3, verse last, and you have brought for the price. And the Lord have given price and received you. And he did not give money for it. And he given his life and brought you. And you have tasted many things in the world. And there are many have tasted cigarettes. And they have the... And many have tasted drugs. And many have tasted wine. And you have tasted sour sweet and a thing. But what the Jesus tasted? But what the Jesus tasted? But the Lord tasted death, to mention in Hebrews, chapter 2. And they say, "Your stomach pain, a head pain only comes then, can you?" And even sometimes, they will stand so much. But what Jesus... But what Jesus Christ tasted, he tasted his death. And not for you, it's for you and me. So we are all debtors to him. Literally, you may not be a debtor, but spiritually, and you have be a debtor, you can hold it. How you can pay the debts? So Saint Paul says, "I am a debtor to preach the gospel." To Greeks. And to a wise. I am unwise to and to debtors. And what we understand from this. So this is a convention, is a time where we have to repay our debts. Through the ministry, we suffer and we are paying our debts. And he says, "So word and account response is possible, I preach the gospel." So according to a extent, you can preach the gospel. And not in a halfway. And Lord know how much of strength you have. And he given you wisdom. Given you knowledge. And he given the word of knowledge. And given the knowledge of the word. And the Lord have given you words to speak to many people. And he given you money. And given you... So how you are using according to efforts? First, for the sake of the gospel, what you have did. And first, you have checked yourself, what you have did for the sake of the gospel. And if you do not repay this money, you cannot do anything. When you go transfer to Madurai, he said. I visited him. And he said, "So we should not be a gang as a team, we have to work out." A gang is like a group and it will go quarreling and fighting, but if it is team, it like a sports and we can compare. If you work with a team, and we can victory. And the evangelism ministry is not doing individually, we have to work together and have to do. So we have to act accordingly. And how sort of preaching the gospel? When we see the anointing of Jesus and book of the Gospel of Luke, chapter 4. When we look into Luke, chapter 4, verse 18.
Kathirade avyaaanam reenmela irukkar Darathreerakkus suviseshathai pressinkavadi enne abishigam paninaa.
The anointing was rested upon us to preach the gospel. Sometimes, you may be inelegant in speech, but you are not preaching the gospel and we do not know anything that that. And for the convention and for this ministry, what you have suffered and delivered was given, and you will also have the potion for the reward given. In the beginning days, and they will not invest money in the share market. But now many are investing and they are deceived. Anak, arambakhalangalile chella companygalenambi Konjamashare portavangalaa Inniki koodishwarangala arukkargan Enna andhakampeenilay pevavaiyche Devaupaychi Inniki portra share Mele vandhi Safety locker la irukkara. This share you give here will be in the safety locker above. When you invest here, the robbers may come, but above there will not be any moth or rest or any robbers will come there or thief come there and whatever things you do, you will get a great reward. When we look into the book of Genesis, chapter 31, verses.
Ennal iyanjamattum naan ungal tagappanakkuvoodiyaseydhar.
And I did ministry the father according to my faith. With all your power, that is impossible to you, you have to preach the gospel. You have to issue the notice. And you must go for the auto ministry. You must go in procession. And you have to take part in flexible board ministry. And you have to come to spread the max. And what are the ways to spread the gospel and you have to walk even in the procession? But here he says so. I have served my father with all my power. To whom you have to serve? And this ministry is not for pastor. To whom you are doing this ministry? And this is the ministry you do for the heavenly father. How you must do? How you must do? Just showing a head or tail? He will stay here and there and at last, he will go to home and sleep. And here, in our church, more than believers, there are many supervisors. They stay in kitchen and they will be in the gate and at last, they reach home. And he said, "So how I have served your father?" With all my power, with all my efforts, I did so. And what is the meaning with all my power? What is the meaning of the word? And he said, "So about the suffering, he suffered." When he speak about his sufferings. And night and day, I lay bed a lot. 39:40 of Genesis.
Pagale veelam, iravile kudiram enne pachitthadu Nithre enkannalakku dhuramai irthadu Ividamai paadupattain.
Pagalle veelakustappattain, iravile kulurakustappattain Thongamma kadanna, ippudi naan conventionikaapadupattain. And day and night, I suffered this convention even without sleeping. When you come here, there is no water. And if you come here by... Innaki vandha enna kosukkadiyidhe? Ah, adu onuve prachinile. Tuavangariyadukku pombodi enna kosukkadiyidhe? Innor kosukkadiyidhe? And if you come here, the mosquitoes will bite you. And what you are doing for the Lord? When you come here, sunshine upon you. And night, you have a cold. So you said, "So we will go to home." Those who come from Tirupattur Nagar, they cannot return back and without any way, they will stay here. And Kara Samangalap Thiyagarajubraman Konavatam, they will be escaped. And 10 o'clock, they will come. And 6 o'clock, they will come like they come to the marriage house. And no one must come in color garments. And you must be very clear in the house of God. With all your power, with all your effects, you must do the ministry in the house of God. And to this convention, you must not do this work or that work. Or devanudai eplai, indhavale cheyya, abdinaarukkukkada. People of God, they should not say, "I know this work or that work," they must ready for any kind of work. They must be all round out. If they need to spread max, they must spread max. If they have to clean the bathroom, they must clean the bathroom. And there is no one towards the vessels, you must come to that place. And you must take the water, you must come to that place. And you should not say, "I have only duty to wash the vessels." And duty is given for your honor. Someone with the name is not mentioned in the list and they will go home, it is not a government job. And they used to say, they come and look to her and they have made a set of the church. It may be the printing mistake or they have kept you as an all rounder. And whatever the work may be, you must be ready to do. Inna 30 naalabunngalapathramatana naan Innna 33 naalayar vandruva Convention kadavat thattirundamun It thirty-third day, they will come and knock the convention. You must be ready. And princes did not give the neck for the good work. I don't know how the princess of the Knavaatan will be, I am going to look unto you. Book of Nehemiah, chapter 3, verse 5.
Avagallarake tekkovu urar paduthupathakattinarakal Agudi brappukkalo thangal aandabadi veelakku thangal kaiduthai kodukavillai.
And we can see how the nobles will be. And what the people did, they did. 18th verse.
Indheyveda karam yenmela nanmyaaanirukkardiyam Raaja inodaisonavarthigaleem avagall karivithain Appudavagall yedundakattubom varugal endusolli Andhannalaveelakku thangalkaygalidhiyappadithinarakal.
And there was a doctor in Chennai. And he is a good brother. And when you look him, you can see him in a cleaning. Have you seen the doctor? And he is a very good person. and he is a very good person. and he is a very good person. and he is the one who is having right anointing. and we had a will to change him to make some other duties but he stayed only in this company cleaning duty. and he wear the gloves and he pick up the waste and he do his work. and he had two hospitals. and his wife is also a doctor. and he is a famous person. and when we look unto him we cannot identify his so commonly person but he will come to the right place to pick up the wastes. will we do like that. it is not a thing only if it's safe you have to do. and we will not give some invitation cards to come you to do the father's work. and we do not have any such schemes to call you for the father's work. and you have to see whether you will give your next to the good work or you will strengthen your hands for the good work. and he said so with all my power I have served your father. with all your power and efforts you have to preach the gospel. when we look on the first chronicles of chapter ninety twenty nine verse two. I have gathered the amount of might which according the house of my God. I have done with all my might. and Saint Paul says that I know to spend and also know to spend for others. and the people of God they must ready to spend their amount for the ministry. I am not telling for the money or matter. and your potion to be increased I said so. when we look on the book of Philomen. and there is a person called Onesimus. and he is an young boy. and he was with me with waste. but after some time and Paul visited him and made him clear. and one he was unworthy now he was so worthy to you and me. and again he sent him there. and perhaps he has desire if you not given you have to sit in my accounts. and when I return I will give you. I said so that your rewards so greatly rejoice in heaven I say. and he said so you keep in my accounts. see how it will be. and he says we clearly. and after coming to the spiritual life. and in another place it is mentioned that your accounts are bound in heaven. and our account should abound in heaven. the money which you give you should not come in the undesirable way or undesirable way and you should not come in the way that you have cheated I does not give. may the God so you may be glorified. and this is our ministry. and this convention is our convention. I used to go to convention at Kerala. after coming here totally is what wind up. on a time I used to visit there on twice or twice in a week. and I was visited to my church. and I was a guest preacher in my church. I used to go often. and I go there what will happen. some used to come and visit me. and when I asked where you are I was a brunette. I was a brunette. I was at UK. and they asked why did you come here for emergency for convention I have come. and Hindus when they come for the temple at the festival they used to come and visit here wherever they are and likewise they have a convention they will come from remote countries and by the Monday they will depart. likewise the church has grown. and such a people are here even today. are we doing like that. when this convention comes here. you should not come alone. with all your power and might you have to bring souls. can you understand. and according to your power and efforts you have to bring your souls by preaching them. you must come and see. you must dare the people like that. you come and see and come and. you will just hear the gospel. you just hear the truth. and Queen of Shaba said so when I asked her heard it was not like that when I was here I was shocked and amazed. you must not come alone. you must bring not chicken your children. and when you come here you must plan that I will come with four believers. have you determined. can you take that plan. father and mother and sister those were unsaved and you have to bring them here sometime the cross made appeared unto them. you have to bring your relatives and friends. and after coming here you should not return with them. and you have to labor before them. and you have to suffer before them. and you have to give your life before them. and you have to preserve your unity. on the way to Punjab at North India there is a saint called Rahib. I unburdened at the place. and he had one twenty acres. and even a single leaf falls from the tree and one person will come and pick up immediately. and they will not sweep after three months. they are not like us and only a lot of duty they will do and when the leaves fall from the trees and immediately they will pick up. and I went to the temple of Sikhs. and I had desire and how they maintain. when I look into the kitchen. how they are working. and they spoil the church by saying if you keep Sambhar and I will keep only scientists. you must go and see there. I was amazed looking that. and all the volunteers inside there they are doing the work willingly. and went to the place where dining. and they give the plates. and one is giving the plates. and there will be doll and chapati they have to come and sit and eat. and they come in rows and lines and they are receiving the plates. after that it is reaching to the washing place. and all the society of the people. and that is the thing that they have as a guru they have to come and work for him. and those who come to worship that place and they have come and doing the helping work. and there they were cleaning the plates by soap water. and everything they were arranging in. no money or no compulsory and they were doing willingly. are we like that. and the rich people. and the rich people they are standing in the queues today I will offer up the money to give the food for others. and such a people were there. and when they are doing the worship for this world and how far we have to do for our ministry. after coming to the spiritual life. with all your might and power you have to bring souls into the church. shall we close our eyes for a minute. now I am going to do a prayer. what was the prayer. I will come to the next message. first two minutes of prayer. or five minutes prayer. now the anointing for this two thousand seventeen convention must. without anointing if we take part in this convention there is no use. the servant of God are the believers those who are without anointing through the ministry there is no effect. and to overcome goal I have and David came with anointing. now we are going to pray for the two thousand seventeen Velur convention. Lord strengthen me to do my work with all my power and effort. Lord strengthen me to stand for God with all my might. shall we stand on knees for two minutes. the church members of the Konavatam they have to receive the anointing for the two thousand seventeen Velur convention. when the anointing descends upon you your legs and foot will be strengthened like a D. and the strength of the unicorn will come upon you. and you will be seen freely willingly in the offering that you paid last year. right now receive that anointing for the convention.
amen.
all the servants of God must receive the anointing for convention. and how many believers are in need of the convention anointing. when receive this anointing now. you will get time. you will get leave. you will get healing in your body. and you will get the free will spirit. when you suffer for this convention the Lord will take you in his hands. right now receive that anointing.
amen.
pastor Joel used to say often. whatever ministry you do. you must fill yourself and go. and don't go into the ministry without empty. fill yourself and go. the Lord have come in our midst to fill you for this convention. fill yourself and come to this convention. for this glorious work I will surrender myself. Lord make me a sable and suffer. let this truth which come and spread in this world. let the name of your glory be glorified in the heaven. let us all be seated. now we are going to take part on the Lord's table. more than our convention the coming of the Lord is very important. now he becomes and we will not conduct the convention we will ascend up the top. and we have to enter into glory. and that is why the sanctification these prayers and this Lord's table. book of Samuel chapter twenty one verse three. and here David is going unto the priest and asking a question to them. and what is in your hands. give me your hands. it may be five loaves of bread and whatever bread it may be given my hand. and this is the time he was traversing in his life with problems. and it is a state of shaken. and he was at a state where he was despised. and this is the time those who loved him were chasing him away. but now he was with empty hands he stood there. and there was no food for him for the next time. and you do not know that he do. he straightly went to a priest. and he asked is there any bread for me will you give. give me five loaves of bread on my hand or whatever is present. May the God's holy name be glorified. Here he says so. There is no common bread under my hand, but there is a hallowed bread. I look unto the word mentioned by priest. And he asked for bread. And he said, so there is no common bread in my hand. And what was the bread in my hand? But there is a hallowed bread. If it is needed, I will give you. Today we are not need of a common bread. And we are eating our bread and rice and every day in home. And Jesus said, so I am the life of bread of life. And they take part in my flesh, flesh and blood of my, drink of what, the blood and they have eternal life. And we can see this verse in book of John, chapter six, verse forty-three and fifty-four. And here David is asking, give me a bread. And he replied, so there is a hallowed bread, there is no common bread. And how many are in need of a hallowed bread? And we did not come to this denomination to live, not don't live an ordinary life. And this world we can be in a worldly person. And we can be as a name shaker, nominal Christian. And we did not come to this way to live an ordinary life. And we should not be the one who are taking part in the normal or common bread. If you are a believer or if you are a servant of God, you must be turned into a person who was taking a hallowed or holy bread. And what is the problem here? And this hallowed bread can be taken only by the priest. And he asked to the priest and was asking, there was a young man with me and me along with me and you must give a bread for us to eat. When we look on to book of Revelation, chapter one, verse six. When we are washed by the blood of Jesus Christ and we are turned as a changes priest. And those were cleansed by the blood of Jesus and they are having a chance and boldness to agitate the bread of God. When you are washed by the blood of Jesus and you are priest and you should not take the common bread, you have to take the holy bread. And nextly, when the priest was speaking about the bread. He spoke in first Samuel, chapter twenty-one, verse six. And there was another word mentioned about this bread. And there is a bread in the presence of God, the shoe bread. It is a holy bread. And it is the bread only taken player, it can be taken only by the priest. And those who are washed by the blood of Jesus are priests. Not only that. And this bread is the shoe bread. And those who are in the presence of God that take in this bread. And those who say, I will stay in the presence of God, I will preserve the life of staying in the presence of God, only taken bread. After you take part in this bread and you consume it, you have to stay more in the presence of God. Only then you can maintain this holy life. It is not an achievement to take part in Lord's table. After taking this communion to come to the presence of God, you are able to be faithful in all the determination and plans that you have taken. And how many are able to surrender like this? Those were cleansed by the blood of Jesus properly and they say that I lay my life in the presence of God, only they can take their own. Even it may be literally a different word. And it may be seen to be tarnished words for you. If the young men have kept themselves at least from women, I will give you. And he used a word there. And those who take part in the Lord's table must be turned into a young man. In first John, chapter two, verse fourteen, it is mentioned, who are these young ones? A child of God, if a people of God, they have to consume this bread and one, you have to overcome the wicked one. The other one, you must be a strong person. Another word in the word of God must endure in you. Only then you are able to maintain this holy life. And how the young people can preserve his way only by preserving him, this word of God. We can see this word in hundred and nineteen Psalms. And we all must be changed into young ones. And the priest say, young men. In this day you have to overcome the Satan, you have to overcome the wicked one, you have to overcome the sin. And you have to resist the sin. And many have to strive, among you have to shed blood for the resisting the sin. And you must be turned into a strong person. And who are the young ones, they are the mighty ones. And you must have a proper anointing. And they was to keep in feeling in spirit, I do not know whether husband or wife for this. And those who are devil come to the presence of God, they will be risen up. And will the dry bones will resurrect up, it is risen up. And you must be a strong person. And you must be able the person to resist any kind of power of sin. And I write unto you that you have overcome the wicked one. And you are a strong person, so I write unto you. The word of God is endured in you, so I write this. And such a people are the young people are needed in our church. And they may, they may grow old, they are called as a young one. When you speak up with such young people. When we look on to book of Acts of the apostle, chapter five, verses. And there was a group of people, young men with Peter. When Ananiah was fall down immediately and they were taking him. And is there any failures in life, immediately you have to bury it outside. If someone was there. So immediately a question we asked, when is the burial service? And they ask immediately when they will bury. Ananiah was dead and fall down. And wife was at house. Message was not delivered to anyone and immediately the young men buried him. If you are a young man, immediately you are able to bury the powers of death. Whatever the failures may come, occur in your life, you have to bury it immediately. You must be an young one. If so, you are able to consume the holy bread. And other word is that you have to kept away themself that the women. And what does it show? And if you are a, you had take the holy bread and you should not engage. And you should not mingle with the failed one. I believe that you will understand this truth properly. I was confused when I take this verse and come here. And I was a confused state when I was to take with the communion. And this is subject I had never spoke. And I thought there is a mystery, they will, how they will accept it. And Lord said to me. And if they are joined with the wicked one and the holiness will depart from them and there is no holiness in them. And what the first Peter say? Chapter three, verse seven. And you should not engage with the wicked person. You should not engage with the failures or the weakest part and you should not engage with the failed things. And Jesus was resurrected out from the sepulchre. And he was risen up. And he was risen up. And he was risen up from the dead. Mary Magdalene and Mary was come and looked all look unto him. Jesus was not found. But one was standing there. Who was that? And they were confused and they were looking here, they looked like a gardener, they seemed to has. And he was a gardener. And father is a master and although all these people of the church are the gardeners. Now they were asking to the Mary Magdalene. And they were asking to the body and where can we take this body? Jesus said so. And that one voice, her voice heard somewhere. Whose voice it was? Whose voice it was? In one place I called to a particular believer's house. And they did not pick up, and they did not pick up the call. When they picked up the call. They could not identify, either it is a female or male, they could not identify the voice. And when Jesus called Mary and immediately could identify the voice, if you are proper, you can hear the trumpet sound. And he said immediately, Rabuni. And not only that, and with affection, he started to touch her. What Jesus told. And said, so you not touched me. And he said, so I did not ascend up and you should not touch me. If you touch not the woman and if you are not touching the weakest thing and even the weakest thing is not touching you and you can take part in this communion. And you and mine should help to. And we have to gather up to the father. But getting this, if you are holding it fast and such things of world and everything was over. And Saint Paul says that it is better not to touch the woman. And the weakest sin should not touch you, you should not touch the weakest part. When we look on to book of John, chapter two. And the Mary was setting an inquiry that. And given a complaint, there was no wine. And there was no wine here. What Jesus said so. Woman, what have I do with thee? No father and mother assisted and there should not be any sin or weakest things should come near us and we have to ask, what is there for you? When the people of his lights and they were worshiping this carv. And Moses asked for a question. And who is standing on the side of God? And they ascended up and God stood. And he is standing at the side of God. Do not look unto father, mother or sister or brother, you must cut off. And the Lord is expecting such a terrorist people. And with rights he came unto son Jesus and also, but he said so women and he given a slap to him. And when there is holiness, you must take the sword in your hands. If there is divinity, you must take sword in your hands. Caring, bearing and loving and charity, everything comes and when the holiness comes, you must take the sword in your hands. Any weakness may come and they may do reckles and you have to ask, what does you for mean? And he was telling unto Mary, you should not touch me. And the weakness should not come near me. At last. When we look on to book of Revelation, chapter eighteen. And there is a woman that come here. Who was that? And she came in the beast coming upon the sea. Babylon. It's a Babylon. And she died upon this beast and coming from the sea and if you do not touch her and if you don't come going with her, I will give you the holy bread. And who was that? Chapter seventeen, verse five. You must depart from this presence. And when you study about this preceding verse. And no time, no need to read. And the women was brought upon the one who was having the. And the blaspheming name was given to her. And she was wearing the purple and scarlet color. And decked herself with gold precious stones and pearls. Having a golden cup in a handful of abomination and a filthiness and connotation. When you are not arraying or joining with this woman and you will have the holy bread. Let us all close our eyes. And this is a short message for our communion. And you will receive the hallowed bread. And the Lord will give you the life to stay in the presence of God. Since you are washed by the blood of Jesus, you are priest. And the Lord is going to give you the bread where the priests are taking up. It is a shoe bread. It is a holy bread. It will be given to you. But you should not join with the women. And you should not be with the powers of the Babylon, abomination or the connotation. You are the one who are taken up to glory. No power should touch you. And if any power come and touch you, you must say, do not touch me. When the situation changes, you should not go and touch it. If any power speak to you, you must ask, what is there for you and me? If you are like that the presence of God, words will be given to you. Now the holy bread will be given to you. Let us all stay on knees by closing our eyes. For two more minutes. And you must receive the power for this communion. Have to prepare yourself. Perhaps. Perhaps. You may not come and attend this sanctification. You are an accuser. If so, I give you a chance. And there will not be any chance given to the church. Since it is a communion fasting prayer and I have think that the blood of Jesus must come into you, the circulation of blood is there for you and I have given that blood of Jesus must come into you. Let us all pray, Lord, pray for myself. And those who do not come and attend the sanctification meeting sanctified not, you can stand up and sanctify yourself. And those who say that I did not attend any meeting, even a single meeting, you can stand up and you can compass yourself. Others receive the divine power. Lord change me as a young man. I will not give any room for the weakness. I will not allow any power to touch me. Looking unto sin, I will ask, what is there for you and me? I will not engage with any kind of abominations. Today the Lord is going to give you grace. Today, the Lord is going to give you grace. The bread which you concept today is a hallowed bread. The bread which you concept today is a shoe bread. And this bread is taken only by the priest. Graciously, it is given to you and me.